Hard for me.
Good evening, everybody. Um, while the room's filling up, um. Let's come to order, and if you could, please join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance. Okay, thank you, everybody. Can we have a sunshine announcement, please?
Uh, sure. Um, good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. This is a special meeting of the Jersey City uh planning board with a schedule five thirty P M start. To adhere to social distancing protocols and best practices imposed by city and state authorities, the city of Jersey City canceled. All in-person public meetings until further notice. As a result, this planning board meeting is being held virtually as a video conference that is open to the public. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice that this meeting has been given to the editor of the Jersey Journal. The editor of the Jersey City Reporter and L S P S Lito uh and posted. With the city clerk on November twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one. This meeting was also posted on the Jersey City Division of City Planning webpage. And all distribution materials made available to the board were published and available to the public on the Jersey City Open Data Portal.
Alright, thanks, Matt. Uh, can we have a roll call, please?
Sure, Commissioner Dr. Gonzalez.
Here.
Commissioner Torres.
Yeah.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yeah.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Yeah.
And Chairman Langston.
Here.
Alright, we have, we have six commissioners.
Alright, thank you. Uh, can we swear in the staff, please?
See, Matt, do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Um. Matt, uh, I'll ask for correspondence. I know we have one biggie.
Yeah, um, we don't have any other correspondence, so I think we can leave with that announcement, Chairman.
Clean my glasses first. Um, so the master plan for tonight is being carried. Um. I believe, Matt, we're comfortable with uh giving a date?
Yes.
Okay, so we're carrying the. As it's written on the agenda is um. The review and discussion of updates to the master plan, including the vision, the open space element. And the land use element uh that is being carried to a date certain December seventh. Which is next Tuesday night.
And we also want to preserve the notice for.
We are, uh, I'll refer to Santo for that, please.
Yeah, we can carry the item that was listed for tonight's meeting, and it'll be carried to the. Next meeting of the board, which is December seventh. This is the notice that the public will receive. There will be no further notice. All notices sent in regard to this matter are preserved for purposes of the record, so. To everybody out there in the audience attending the meeting virtually. This matter, this matter being the master plan. Uh, it is listed on the agenda at the end of the agenda. It's the last item on the agenda or second to last item on the agenda.
It's item twelve, second to last.
So it is item twelve on the agenda. It is titled Review and Discussion of Updates to the Master Plan, including the vision. The open space element and the land use element. Those matters will be heard on the December seventh meeting. There will be no further notice. And those materials are available, remain available on the link supplied in the agenda for this evening. December seventh, everybody.
December seventh, master plan, everybody. It's gonna happen. Um, alright. It'll happen unless it doesn't, but it'll happen. Um, can we add that to the chat, please? Matt?
Uh, yes.
Alright, so while we're doing that, uh, let's move on to new business. I'll call item eight on the agenda. Is case P two one dash one one five is an administrative amendment for uh five forty-five M L K Drive.
Alright, good evening, everyone. I'm well, how are you?
Good, long time no see.
Yes, uh, Dennis Davino is my expert this evening.
Sure.
While, while we're finding him, this is not a notice case, so there are no notices. My name is Stephen Joseph of the Trump Law Firm, the applicant. Uh, pretty simple amendment. The client is removing the P tech units in this building. And putting in HVAC units because we have HVAC units, we need new screening. So there's really just changes to the roof plan and some of the elevations. Um, Dennis can, can run through that pretty quickly.
Excellent.
Hey.
And Dennis, let me just swear you in, alright?
Okay, so.
Dennis, let me just swear you in.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's alright. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Uh, Dennis Michael Davino, D E V I S and Victor I N O.
Thank you.
Mister Davino, good evening. Uh, I know we qualified you uh last meeting. Your license is still current tonight?
Uh, we are still current.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Good, thank you. Uh, in brief, um, we may change to the uh. For the amendment was really based on P TAC units. Uh, the original design uh approved by a boat by this board. Um, we had P tax on the outside of the building. Um, we realized during the design development phase. That P tax really were not gonna work for every unit, just some of the units, and then some of the units would have to been, had to be a duckless system. So it was decided um by the client just to keep it all one. Type of HVAC system for the units, and so we converted everything from the P tax. Uh, to duckless system. So obviously with a duckless system, we now need. Um, separate condensers for each, um, for each unit, each uh living spa, living unit. So we now have, there's no place to put the condensers except for the roof, so. We now had to take up some green roof space in order to facilitate uh the location of the. Um, P tech unit. So I have some amendment drawings. I can bring them up if I ever figure out how to do share screen. Um, let's see, uh. I don't know that.
We can see it. Oh, nope, it just disappeared.
Yes or no? I got.
It just disappeared. Uh, we saw it for a moment, and now we see a manor A.
Okay, we got it now.
There you go.
Okay, great. So, uh, we'll start with the first um P one sheet. Uh, what you see here on these upper, this, this upper left-hand corner is what was approved by the board. Uh, for the first floor and then the second through five of these two uh. Floor plans at the top of the sheet, the bottom of the sheet is what we're requesting that maybe change that. The, the, the first floor is really pretty basic. We had to take up some of this commercial space. Cause once again, once we got into the design development, we realized that we needed to make uh the mechanical room, the electrical room, the gas meter room. Um, a little bit larger a- as well as the sprinkler room. So, you know, these things happen every time you, you get into the design development part of it. Uh, so you can see uh kind of this, kind of the distance between here and here. Is a little bit longer than it is from here to here, and then the gas meter, the P S E N G wants the gas on the outside wall. So the guest room was here at the middle, and now it's up against the outside wall. So that's the only difference uh on the first floor changes. The second floor change, it's second through five, really not really worth kind of going into this, but the only thing is that there's no P tax now. Uh, so on, on the roof plan, you'll see. Uh, we had about twenty-four hundred square feet of green roof, including the dog run. Uh, we now have to utilize about seven hundred square feet of that space here and there for the mechanical um condensers. Uh, so that's the change there, and we would be incorporating, of course, a screening. Device across the re, you know, um, around the. Um, mechanical equipment in order to screen it from, from neighboring um buildings. So that's why we put the screening component before. We didn't really have any mechanical equipment. So uh, we weren't really providing too much screening. Um, the owner just wanna shoot over. Oh, yeah, okay, well, we can use that. I think this is an older elevation because it still has the word verge on it. Uh, and, well, I could, alright, well, you know what? Let me get, let me go to this other one. Sorry. Okay, you see that? That's still on?
Yes.
Alright, so we, this is a um. The approved elevation, uh, Matt remembers that they didn't want the word of verge on that, so we took, took that. The, the wording off the building. Uh, you can see in the approved elevation, um, you can see that there are actual louvers underneath these windows. And underneath these windows, well, like I said, they didn't work here, so. Um, we ended up doing, uh, the, the thought process at the time of design was that we would just put in. Duckless systems in units that we couldn't put the louvers in. Uh, that was then decided that let's just do all duckless system. So. As you can see now in the revised drawing where the louvers were, we uh, we changed them to glass. So that's, so we have these uh glass awnings, uh, lower sections. Uh, underneath the original um punched opening, so where, where, where there were louvers, they're now glass. Um, so that's really the only difference on the front elevation, on the rear elevation, go back to this one. Is again, same type of thing. Uh, on the elevation facing Clinton was the same, same issue. Where we had P tax, we now have all glass. Uh, at the rear. You see only this, we had no, we weren't showing P taxes. This is the approved elevation. We weren't showing P tax on any of where we have the, the door openings, only underneath this glass. You can see that's been taken out, so we're actually, we're not putting glass here, we're just. Continuing the siding across, so that's the change in the rear part of the elevation. And, and that is it. They're the only changes that we're requesting.
Okay.
Thank you, Dennis. Uh, that concludes our direct testimony.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just have a couple of quick questions. Uh, the placement of the um condenser units on the. Alright, do they mount directly? Are they anchored into the concrete?
Well, this is a wood, it's a wood frame structure, and um, they will be mounted over. You know, the thought was maybe we can pick them up on um, on some kind of a doneage system and still keep the green roof, but then we thought. How difficult is it gonna be to maintain the green roof underneath the equipment? So this, so where we're mounting this mechanical equipment uh will be directly. You know, al- almost on a roof, probably about eight inches off the roof on, on, on pedestals.
Yeah, that was my question. If, if we could save that green roof and just mount those units on top of the.
We could, we could try. Um, I, I just, I hope. We've never, I've never put mechanical equipment over green roof areas. We can try and. Um, but I, I mean, I just worry whether or not we're gonna be able to, you know. Remember, you know, we have, sometimes you have um issues where mechanical equipment is, you have to maintain the roof a little bit better.
Sure.
Um, but we prefer not to, but if the board uh is insisting on it, we'll do the best we can. We'll pick the equipment up a little bit more, and we'll try to get green roof on, keep, maintain the green roof. We just, you know. We just thought that it would be uh, um, less of a maintenance issue if we, if we didn't have to put the green roof under there.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not demanding. Um. Uh, I'm just curious, does, does that trigger a deviation, a green roof deviation or no?
Um, a deviation from uh having green roof?
Yeah.
No, I believe the, the um. It was really the occupied roofs space that we were i- increased it, and actually it was increased based on. What the community board wanted. They actually wanted us to provide additional occupied roof space. So I don't, I don't think, uh, Stephen, is you.
We were, I, I'm, I'm pulling, I'm pulling the old application now, but we were, we were. S- significantly over, we had a lot of green roof space on.
Okay, we had a, we had twenty-four hundred, well, including the dog run, twenty-four hundred and forty-five square feet of green roof. We're reducing that by seven hundred if we don't put the green roof underneath the condensers. To seventeen hundred and forty-five, so still a lot of green roof.
Yeah, I'm just making sure that, you know, we don't have to give you a deviation for it tonight, and we just don't know about it, that's all. Um. I did get a uh. Uh, Jeffrey, just let me know, uh, those last two pages I think that you went through are not in the packet. So we would have to mark those.
Oh, which ones?
Uh, the.
The, the other plan you brought up that doesn't have the verge, verge signage on it.
Well, I, that was actually what was approved, the final set that was. Was signed by, was signed by. Didn't have that on there, so.
Yeah, Dennis, we just need to mark the other set that you brought up.
Okay.
Because we did not distribute that to the board. So if you could just read off the sheet number and the date, the date that's on there. And describe it.
Okay, well, you want, we, we're calling it S K one. And it is the approved elevation. Um, without the um, without the graphic on the, on the upper part of the. Um. Of the, of the uh parapet, I guess you'd call it.
Okay, and is it dated, the sheet?
Uh, well, today's date, because we just. So we can, we can use today's date for that.
Okay, and uh, we'll just need you to send us this digitally.
Okay.
Um, does that market, uh, or does that describe it for your, your purposes, Mike?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Steven, you, I'll send this over to directly you, Matt?
Yeah, and I guess we're marking that A two. Oh, no, A one, there was no notice here.
Alright, I'll shoot it, I'll shoot it over right now.
Alright. Uh, the only other question I do have, uh, Mr. Davino, these are. I, I'm. Just getting up to speed on duckless systems, unfortunately. Um. Those are, they're like split systems, correct?
They're, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, they're what?
They're split system.
They, they call, another word is they call them mini splits is another.
Yes, um, so there's no. There's no penetrations on the outside of the building here. They're all internal.
O- other than the roof, yeah, that's correct.
Okay, so all the line sets run up to the condensers internally and, and go out onto the roof?
Right.
Okay.
Nope.
So.
They would require a condensate line, but that will be drained down through the plumbing system.
Okay, gotcha. They can't just drain out onto the roof?
Well, then you would have to pump them up, and then you got pump problems.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Understood, good. I learned something tonight. I'm uh. Glad I signed on. Um. That's, that's it for me. Anybody else? Any questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Davino. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And if you could, please stop uh sharing your screen.
Yep.
And I feel like I need to travel with you. You have some uh. Some great pictures.
Shoot, you guys can see that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, this is my, uh, the days when I used to scuba dive. Those days are over.
Ah. Every two.
And I, I did, I just, I did wanna clarify for the board. I took a quick look at the plan. There's not a green roof requirement. It just says that the. Green roof shall be maximized um to maximize recreational amenity space. And remaining rooftop areas developed as a, as a green roof, so mechanical equipment and all of that. Um, is, is anything extra beyond that shall be green roof.
Okay, gotcha. Um, yeah, so if nobody else has questions, I'll open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment, please raise your hand. And once again, if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Anybody from the public, please raise your hand if you'd like to speak on this application, and if you're calling in, you can press star nine.
Mr. Chair, I don't see anyone. I moved to close the public.
Second.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Um, Matt, you're sitting in for Cameron tonight, correct?
Yeah, I'm sitting in for Cameron. Um, so I, I uh was briefed on the A application and uh. By Cameron and was watching this presentation here. The, the, the changes seem very minor. Uh, staff would recommend approval.
Okay, thanks, Matt.
Sir Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two one dash one one five. It's presented to the board here tonight.
Second.
Second. A motion is made and seconded for approval.
Our motion approved, Doctor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres. Might be on mute there.
I vote aye.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor on a motion approved.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
And thanks for having this special meeting. Appreciate it.
No problem, no problem.
You want me to send this to you or Cameron?
You, you can send it to me, Dennis, and I'll, and I'll forward it over to.
Alright, you got it. Alright, good night, everyone.
Alright, let's move on to item nine is case P two one dash one one seven is a one-year extension request for uh the address. Uh, four forty-four Washington Boulevard. And once again, uh, while we're waiting for Mr. Tuval. Uh, if anybody's on here that didn't hear the announcement in the beginning, uh, the master plan. Examination has been carried to the December seventh meeting. And once again, this is your notice. You will not receive new notice, so it's carried to December seventh.
Ready, Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Yeah, we're all set for you.
Okay, great. So, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Jason Tuval, attorney for the applicant. Um, this was an application that was approved back in October of uh twenty nineteen. Four 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 Washington Boulevard, block eleven, six oh three, lot six. It was for a seventy-story tower with nine hundred and fifty units. Um, it, the applicant was um. Uh, Urban Renewal Tower Co., Jersey City Urban Renewal, Inc. Um, this is a one-year extension that we're asking for based on the fact that we still need to. Obtain some additional governmental outside agency approvals. It's the first extension that we've sought in connection with this. Application, and we're doing this somewhat conservatively. Um, I think we're in some new territory here where. Um, there was a permit extension act in twenty twenty for COVID nineteen that was adopted by the governor. Um, it told um. All approvals from March of twenty twenty through actually June of twenty twenty-one. So I believe we actually have more time on this. We have an, maybe an additional twelve months before we actually had to ask for this extension. However, based strictly on the M L U L, uh, prior to COVID nineteen, we just thought it would be prudent to. Ask for the extension without prejudice to the other rights that we may have, um, in addition to the, uh, based on the permit extension act. So, um, it's the first extension, um, still working on some outside agency approvals, and some of the other delays were just due to COVID nineteen and the world just kinda. You know, coming to a, a, being pretty slow from a permitting process, so that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. It's pretty straightforward.
Okay, thanks, counsel, and yeah, believe me, we understand. Um.
So Chairman, the only thing I would add from a legal perspective, I think that Mr. Tuval is correct. I think that. The extension probably grants him a additional year, so. Uh, if the board were to act favorably upon it, uh, I would recommend that we put in the resolution. That that one-year extension starts from. The June twenty twenty-one, count the year, and start the extension that way. So it may actually give him the first two years. In case he winds up needing additional extensions thereafter. Doesn't lose the year, so to speak.
Yeah, and I can work with, with uh Mr. Alampi. I'm just ensuring that the date is accurate pursuant to the, the twenty twenty permit extension act as well.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, and of course, any uh comments from the original approval um. Conditions and, and.
Right, all, all, all still in effect, correct?
Okay, uh, anybody, any questions? Oh, okay, thank you, counsel. Um, is anybody here from public that wants to comment on this? If you'd like to comment on this application, please raise your hand. If you are calling in, you can press star nine. I don't see any call-ins, but uh.
Mr. Chair, I don't see anyone. I'd like to uh make a motion to close the public.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Uh, I'll entertain a motion. Uh, I'm sorry, um, Matt, do you have anything you wanna?
I'll, I'll just, I'll just add that um, uh, Mr. Tuval's been coordinating with city planning on. Squaring away some of the public access easements that are tied to the approval. For this, and uh, we, we believe that those shortly be before uh city council. So there is a. There's a good effort of moving this application forward.
Okay, thank you.
Sir Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two one dash one one seven as presented to the board here tonight.
Second.
Alright, motion is made and seconded for approval.
I'm motion approved, Doctor Gonzalez.
Mister Tuval, I appreciate your uh being proactive and being here uh earlier than you needed to be, and we appreciate that. I vote aye.
Commissioner Torres.
All aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Motion carries all in favor.
Alright, thank you, everybody. Alright, let's move on to item ten is case P two one dash one three zero. Is an administrative amendment, uh, address being seventeen to nineteen and fifty-three to sixty-three Yale Avenue. And four hundred and one forty-eight to four thirty Claremont Avenue. Applicant is four hundred Claremont Urban Renewal. LLC, Mr. McCamp?
Uh, good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners, uh, Staff and Counsel. Nice to see you all tonight. Um, uh, my name is Jim McCann from the Law Office of Connell Foley in Jersey City. I'm here tonight appearing on behalf of. And representing four hundred Claremont LLC uh in connection with property at block two one eight oh one. Lot four point oh one, um, commonly known as four hundred Claremont Avenue in the Route four forty Culver redevelopment plan area. Uh, the relief requested tonight, this is an administrative amendment with a handful of very minor changes. Uh, one to the exterior of the building and uh the rest to the interior of the building. Um, as you may know, this is a six-story building, contains six hundred and thirty-one residential units. Uh, as approved, about twelve thousand square feet of commercial and a parking garage as approved currently with two hundred and seventy-nine spaces. It's located on Claremont Avenue. Um, near the NJ Transit Parking Lot and West Side Station Transit Facility, uh, Light Rail Facility Station. Um, I did notice, uh, so I'll just take a moment and uh ask counsel if he would please uh. Confirm that he received my notice and that it's adequate for jurisdictional purposes. And while he's doing that, Matt, um, I have one witness. It's Michael Higgins. Um, so if you could promote him, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, I think he's listed as M H S architect, so I just promoted him.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Chairman, I am received the affidavit of publication, proof of mailing with respect to the four hundred Claremont Ave. Case P two one dash one three zero. Had the opportunity to review it. All does appear to be in order. Jurisdiction is proper before this board. We'll mark it as A one for the record.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
Okay, um. Uh, just the, the, the documents that were filed with the planning department in connection with this application are a letter application. And a select number of sheets of architectural site plans and civil plans. Uh, all of those documents are posted on the planning division web portal. And uh, having said that, um, I'm just gonna turn the presentation over to Mr. Michael Higgins, who's the project architect. And has been from the inception of this project, and he'll very briefly run you through, uh, there are six changes. To the plan, he's gonna take you through them.
And Michael, let me just swear you in before you get started. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, yes.
For the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Michael Higgins, H I G G I N S.
Thank you.
Mister Higgins, good evening. Um, were you the architect of record on the, the original?
I think Dean was the original architect of record, and I'm working on this for the, uh, for the amendment.
Okay.
I've been, I've been involved through the construction, though, so I, I have more connection to it.
So, obviously, we've qualified you before, and I hope your license is current tonight.
It is still current, thank you.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified again.
Terrific. Terrific. I'll share my screen and we can run through, uh, these changes. Okay. Let's see, can you guys see the screen?
Yes.
We can, yeah.
So let me just get my cursor on the right location. This is the ground floor plan, uh, that was submitted, uh, as Mr., okay, let's go back. As Mr. McCann indicated, the changes are primarily have to do with the, um, interior of the building. But there is one small one hundred and sixty-five square foot vestibule that was added on to the front of the building. So to orient you, we're on Claremont. This is the recessed courtyard that acts as the entry point to the main lobby of the building. And, uh, at one point, it was contemplated that we'd have a revolving door as part of the, uh, entry sequence, so it didn't interrupt the lobby too significantly. But since COVID and people's concerns about touching surfaces, the, uh, developer requested that we change the design to a, a double-acting, uh, sliding door. So it's all motion detector activated and people can access the building without touching anything. Uh, and it allows it to be a little bit more, uh, COVID, uh, preventing or, or safe in terms of today's, um, uh, spirit. Uh, the, so that was the change to that. There's still a significant amount of the plaza and the, uh, the setback from the curb is approximately thirty feet. The other changes had to do with two small studio units were removed in this area in the center of the building to allow for a larger open mailroom with more connection to the residential units that are along Yale. So at this ground floor, the owner decided to remove two units, so the total unit count is revised from six hundred and thirty-one to six hundred and twenty-nine, and that changes the number of studios to two hundred and twenty-five.
Um, Mr. Higgins, I, I just have to pause you one second. I just realized and, uh, Vice Chair Gonzalez just realized as well, he does need to recuse on this application.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. We'll see you in a second.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, sorry, Mr. Higgins, go ahead.
No problem, no problem. The, um, the other changes within the ground floor have to do with some of the amenity spaces, uh, because of the very wide length of the building, six hundred feet, a little bit more than six hundred feet. Um, the developer requested that we have a better sense of connection, so there's a long, open space that goes east to west that links all, both the pool deck, the different amenity rooms, uh, the game areas and, uh, some of the outdoor gardens, uh, and the, from the fitness center all the way through the building. Uh, and so that becomes an area where there's a lot of informal seating for building residents to, uh, to occupy during the day, to get out of their apartments and to, uh, to spend time and gather. Uh, there's also been some development of some monumental stairs that use a curved form that allows the lobby to feel a little bit more, um, hotel-like or, or stylized. It was a design intent. Some of the other changes have to do with the basement, but what they, what they entail is providing the storage areas for the retail. There's a small cafe and a, uh, natural juice, uh, store and a restaurant, and we added some, uh, storage spaces. And I'll go to the basement plan now to show you these spaces for those retail spaces. So a few, three small or four small, uh, retail storage spaces were added. Uh, that allows the ground floor, since it's, it's sort of shallow space, it allows it to be the active retail space for a better pedestrian and, uh, you know, activate the sidewalk, and it just seems to work better not having the storage on the, on the first floor of the building. Um, what happened when we took these spaces, we lost some parking. We had, uh, more parking that was required. Now we have two hundred and fifty-eight parking spaces, twenty-two percent are compacts, thirty percent are permitted, so we're within that number. And the number of spaces that were required, uh, is less than that. I don't have it on my cheat sheet here, but we exceed the required amount of parking.
So, Michael, does it refresh your recollection if I tell you the required amount of parking pursuant to the redevelopment plan is two hundred and eight spaces?
That's correct. That's that refreshes my memory. Thank you, Jim.
So we're still, we're still well over the.
Well, over the required amount.
Right.
Um, some of the other changes that had to do was a reconfiguration of the bike parking. Uh, we've actually added an additional, uh, three hundred and eighteen spaces are required under this, uh, uh, plan, but we've provided three hundred and twenty-four spaces throughout the garage. Um, the, some additional private storage spaces were added in these rooms that include approximately, I think, a hundred and fifty private storage lockers that are both inside rooms and then at the front of these parking spaces. There was a little extra room in the garage depth that wasn't required for parking, and so private storage lockers were also added. Parking, the amenity. I, no additional variances, no new variances were required for any of these changes. And again, mostly they were interior changes with the exception being that vestibule at the front entry.
And Michael, just to confirm, the plans that you've put up on the screen tonight are actually the file, the plans that are filed pers- uh, as part of our administrative amendment, correct?
That's correct. And it has the red clouds on it, and we went through these, uh, with the Planning Department.
Yep, okay. Uh, I have no further questions, uh, Commissioners.
All right, thank you, Mr. Higgins. Um, yeah, I have no questions. Anybody else? All right, thank you, sir.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. McCann, anything else from you?
No, that's my presentation. Request, uh, request approval.
Sure, and obviously, um, you know, any, uh, conditions that were on the original approval still apply as long as they don't interfere with these changes tonight.
Acknowledged.
Okay, thank you. Uh, all right, so at this time, uh, Mr. Higgins, if you could, please stop sharing your screen.
Yeah, I'm just trying to find that right now.
All right.
Here we go, yep.
Okay, so at this time, uh, let's open it up for public comment. Anybody from public that wants to comment on this application, if you could, please raise your hands. And if you are calling in, we do see the councilwoman with her hand raised. And, uh, if you are calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands.
Running Councilwoman, Penzery.
Good evening, Councilwoman. How are you?
Good evening. I'm doing well. How's everybody?
Great. Uh, I just need to swear you in before you speak, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Mira, good evening.
Hi, good evening.
And, uh, we usually have a five-minute limit for public comment. Uh, we do waive that for the, uh, only the ward be councilwoman, so you're up.
Well, that, that won't be necessary. I'll just be very brief. Um, I just wanna get on the record just some of the concerns I have with the removal of twenty parking spaces in this building. As you all will recall, when we had our community meetings, if, um, a couple of years ago now, um, parking was a concern, even though they were doing over the amount, and even though there is proximity to the light rail, um, that's working on an assumption that people in the area are using that method to commute. So I just, um, you know, just wanna get those concerns on the record. Um, that was a fight for the residents that they did want to have, and to see that removed, um, is, you know, it's, it's gonna be disappointing for people and frustrating, because if those twenty, assuming that all of the spots will be taken, those twenty cars go on the street, and then you also have the retail component with people potentially driving in there, which is going to exacerbate an already congested area. So that's, that's it for me.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate it. And, um, that is, uh, zone parking over there, correct?
I don't know if it extends all the way down to, um, Mallory Avenue. I, there is zone parking from, um, um, parts of Bergen, uh, um, Grant Avenue, Broadham Parkway, Audubon, parts of Culver, starting at Bergen Avenue, but I don't know that it goes all. I think it stops at West Side Avenue.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so if somehow that got included in, in zone parking, um, you know, obviously those residents that didn't have a parking spot in that garage would not be able to get zone permits.
Correct.
Just a, uh, heads up.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We appreciate it. Um, all right, anybody else from public? If anybody wants to comment, please raise your hands. And if you are calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands. Anybody else from public?
There's seen no more public comment. I'd like to close the public comment at this time.
Second it.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Uh, Matt, do you have anything you wanna add?
Uh, so I'm gonna just reiterate that, uh, there are amendments. They're not asking for any variances. Um, they are, uh, minor as far as, uh, regarding exterior changes. Um, and the reasons were made clear as to why they're changing the vestibule, uh, to contactless. Uh, I think the only item that maybe we would just wanna have them, uh, or just, uh, touch upon was that they, they just straightened out the, the dumpster and the, the trash removal, um, based on their coordination with the, the, the Division of Sanitation. Um, and that was reflected in the plans they were showing here tonight. Um, but that staff has no other comments.
Okay, thanks, Matt. All right, I would entertain a motion.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two, one dash, one, three, zero, as presented to the board this evening.
Second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second for approval.
Okay, I'm gonna say Acting Chairman, Vice Chairman, Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Yes, I, um, wanna thank the councilwoman, uh, taking time out to, uh, let us know, um, it's kinda disappointing that they, um, had a community meetings, they make these agreements with the community, and then have community meetings to let them know that they're taking these spots away again after a lot of time. I know, uh, seems that kinda necessary to do, they tried to, to achieve, but, um, you could kinda make a promise to the community that they were gonna have this many spaces, even go there extra. Um, it's a shame that they, uh, don't find another way to redesign it and put those spaces back, I wish they would. You can't count on the zoning part for that area. So, um, I'm gonna vote aye, hoping that they come back to us and tell us they're gonna give the other twenty-one. That's all.
Commissioner Cruz.
I vote no.
Commissioner Allen.
Hi.
Chairman Langston.
Um, yeah, I do wanna recognize, uh, the councilwoman. I, I completely agree. It's, a- and I agree with Commissioner Torres as well. Um, you know, this plan was presented to a community with those parking spaces in mind. Uh, be that as it may, it doesn't create a variance that they're reducing that number of spaces. Um, so do I wish that they reached out to the community and, and discuss it with them, of course. Um, but as far as the planning board goes, I, I don't see, you know, anything within the law that we could hold them to those. Uh, so, you know, it's an unfortunate aye for me tonight.
Motion carries four, four, one against and one recusal.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, counsel. And, uh, if we could, let's bring, uh, Vice Chair Gonzalez back up. Thank you. And let's move on, um, to, uh, item eleven on the agenda is case P two, one dash, one, one, eight is a site plan amendment to a final major site plan with variances, uh, address is three fifty-one Marin Boulevard.
Uh, good evening, Commissioners. Uh, my name is Jim McCann. Oh, uh, Matt, before I go on the record, I have, um, I have a number of people. Um, Jacob Majnimer from HLW, John Gerring from HLW, Matt Knowles from Dresner, and Julie Kabisky from, uh, Malillo.
I think I missed the third name you said there.
Matt Knowles.
Hmm, no, before that one.
Uh.
Jay Gerring, you said?
Jacob Majnimer, he's up. You have him. I see him.
Who's John Gerring?
Uh, John Gerring, I think you're missing. Uh, so, uh, good evening again, Commissioners. My name is Jim McCann from the Law Firm of Connell Foley, uh, representing three fifty-one Marin LLC in connection with property at, uh, block one, one, five, oh, eight, lot three point zero, one, commonly referred to as three fifty-one Marin Boulevard. It's located on Marin between First Street and Bay Street in the Morgan Grove Marin redevelopment plan area. Uh, the relief requested tonight is, um, an amended final site plan for a handful of very, very minor changes uh, to the approved plans. And there's also a request for two signage deviations to increase the square footage and add lighting to a previously approved, uh, main entrance residential sign. Um, having said that, uh, procedurally, I did notice, uh, in accordance with the MLUL, so I would turn it over to counsel to just confirm receipt of my notice and that I have jurisdiction tonight.
Thank you, counsel. I am and receive the affidavit of publication, proof of mailing with respect to the application at three fifty-one Marin Boulevard. It is case P two, one dash, one, one, eight here in the city. All those appear to be in order. We can mark that as a one for the record, Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
So, um, as you may know, uh, th- this project, uh, is under construction, and in fact, it is near substantial completion. Uh, it's thirty-eight stories, five hundred and seven residential units, about eight thousand square feet of gla- ground for commercial, ground floor commercial, two hundred and three parking spaces in the garage, and a forty-five hundred square foot, uh, plaza located on the corner of Bay, uh, and Marin, um, which is what you're looking at on your screen right now. Um, this project received an initial preliminary and final site plan approval on November thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Received an amended approval on December thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. And, uh, during the course of construction, there, there were some changes that, uh, needed to be, that needed to be made to the plans. Uh, the filing, uh, that was made with the Planning Division, uh, for this application included amended final site plans, uh, prepared by Dresner, Robin, the Project Civil Engineers, HLW, the Project Architects, and Malillo and Bauer, the Project Landscape Architects. Each set of plans was accompanied by a detailed memorandum, uh, from each uh, of those disciplines, uh, summarizing and outlining, uh, the changes to the plans. Uh, all those memos are dated September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one. Um, besides that, all changes to the plans, uh, were called out by clouding. Uh, and, uh, there was also a principal point statement filed in support of the, uh, signage deviations. Uh, and all of those documents are posted on the web, the Planning Division web portal. And, uh, any slides that you see tonight are, um, are included are, are the actual plans that were filed with the Planning Division. Um, I'll tell you just as a summary of the application that none of the changes to these, to the plans, uh, changed the height of the building, the number of stories, the unit count, uh, the unit configuration. There are no changes to the parking garage, no changes to the parking count. Uh, there are no changes to the square footage of the plaza. No changes to the features in the plaza, no changes to the landscaping in the plaza, and there are no changes to the building facade materials. Um, literally, all of the changes to the project are, I would consider to be ornamental. Uh, just to give you a couple of examples, there's some directional signage that we're requesting approval for, uh, on the building. Uh, some of the pavers in the, uh, the size of, uh, uh, some of the pavers in the plaza, uh, were changed a little bit to increase drainage. Um, garage fixtures inside the garage. Um garage fixtures inside the garage were changed because the the fixtures that were originally approved could no longer be obtained. Uh those are the kinds of changes that uh we're asking for tonight. Um and it was, we are, as the applicant, we are willing and ready to just rely on the on the plans and our. Memorandums that were submitted to planning. Uh for this board to approve rather than go through each and every change that were was made on the pages of the plans. So if it pleases the board, we're we're willing to do that. The only thing that I can't do that on. Uh would be the signage deviation. I'm gonna put in a little testimony on that. I do have Matt Knowles from Dresner ready to testify if necessary or answer any questions you might have about the filed plans. Uh John Garing is available to testify in connection with uh the architecture as and Julie Kabisky. In connection with any landscaping. But um the changes are so minor, I'm willing to just move forward based upon the plans and the memos. Uh for the vast majority of the changes, there was a change to the flood barrier system. But again, it has no impact on the streetscape or the facade of the building. It's a very minor change um to the system. Uh so Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I'll just ask you if uh if the board is willing to just rely on the plans and the. Memos, if you've all reviewed them and ask if you have questions.
Um yeah, I agree, counsel. I don't have any questions. Uh I'll ask the rest of the board if they have any questions regarding any of these changes. And uh I would ask Matt, would you? I mean, I have my answer. Uh would you consider this de minimis except for the signage?
The 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 amendments described, yes. Okay, I yeah, I think the only thing that I wanted to call out on the record regarding uh the operation was just that. They provided some more information on the fountain jets in the plaza. And they just specified in one of their memos that it'd be seven days a week. Commencing on Memorial Day each year and ending at Labor Day between noon and six P M. Which which seemed acceptable. Uh so that's it.
Okay, um yeah, I agree. Let's just go with the plans that are uh presented or in the packet and um. Counsel.
Your case on. Chairman, before we vote I on that, I have to, I do have a question on the lighting.
Sure.
Did they um? I I know it's minor, but I'm just wondering, are you just trying to match the lighting that was approved as close as possible? Or is it because you can't get the ones that we did approve? And um and I don't see any problem with it or that they changed the lighting completely.
So my understanding is that the the fixtures that were obtained are the closest available to the ones that were approved. They will give the same amount of light. Um they they're, it's just a different fixture.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh um anybody else, any questions? Okay, so counsel, do we uh you want to make your case for your uh variance?
Yeah, so um so the plan that you see on the screen um. Is is the rendering prepared by and filed with the planning division. It was prepared by HLW. And if you can see on the bottom right, there's a purple band there. And I'll bring John Garing in in a minute, but just to give you an idea. Um a s- a sign was already approved by this board um for that area. Um the sign that was approved complied with the redevelopment plan requirements, which are that it it can only be twenty square feet. Um and it and there's a prohibition in the plan against lighting um against lighting the sign. The ask tonight, the request request for relief in connection with that sign. Is that the board allow us to make it fifty four square feet in size? And that we be permitted to uh provide internal lighting for that sign. And the reason why um the the deviations are being requested is because. If you look at the this project, the main entrance of the building is set back behind the plaza. And there's a lot going on in the plaza. There's landscaping, trees, um seating. So it makes it a little bit difficult to actually see from the sidewalk where the main entrance to the building actually is. There's also retail all around um the main entrance of the building. So from a pedestrian point of view and people coming and going to the building. Uh we felt that it's important to increase the size of the building to call out the main entrance to the residential port of the built part of the building. But there's probably a more important reason um that I'll just lay out for you, which is that. Emergency services and the fire department and the police. They all need to know and be able to easily identify the main entrance of the building. The fire command system, uh if you looked on the plans, you would see is directly behind. The um the fire command room is directly behind the main entrance of the building. So another reason to increase the 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 size of the sign and light it up. Is that, you know, besides pedestrians, people coming and going, guests. It's helpful to emergency services to have a slightly bigger sign. In light of the setback of the plaza, we don't think that a fifty four square foot sign is is outrageous. And in fact. John Garing prepared an inset of the sign, which is the second slide. We can put that up. Um and show you the sign. It's very tastefully done. That's actually the sign that we're asking be be approved. That's on your on your filed plans. So if you have more questions about the signage, I'll bring John Garing up to to testify. If if you've seen enough, that's okay also, and we'll um. Um I'll rest.
Counsel, the only thing I would want to see, uh can you put up a? Uh you know, before and after of the sign? Do you have one available?
A before and after?
Yeah, like the approved size compared to to this size?
I I do not believe we have that. The approved size was twenty square feet. Um that sign you're looking at is fifty four square feet.
Okay.
Is roughly double the size.
Yeah. Okay, um yeah, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, it's. The size is is cut and dry. Um I don't know if we need testimony from Mr. Garing. Uh does anybody have any questions?
No, how bright is the light itself though on the side? It's missing like a black and white. It looks like so. I can't tell.
There, I believe they're um internally lit, correct?
Internally lit?
Uh yes, I believe they are, but you know, we I might need to just call John Garing because I'm the specific details about the lighting. I'm not quite sure of.
Sure, sure. Let's call Mr. Garing up.
John, are you able to talk? We cannot hear you. Can you hear us, John? Yeah, I saw your mouth moving before, but no words were coming out.
Um. Do you have the call in uh number? Oh, connecting audio, I see.
Yeah, can you hear me?
So there's another John Garing. Can we just remove that John Garing?
Yes, remove the one with the chair. And uh Mr. Garing, we're getting a nasty echo from somewhere.
Yeah, I think that's the second John Garing on here.
Okay. Well, let's take care of it.
Why am I not seeing it? Oh.
It's Jay Garing.
I will try to adjust the volume. Okay, is this?
Alright, there we go. That should be much better. Alright, John, let me just swear you in, okay? If you could raise your right hand.
Yes.
Do you have any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
John Garing, G E R I N G.
Thank you.
Mr. Garing, good evening. Uh we've qualified you numerous times. Your license is current tonight?
Yes, it is current.
Okay, thanks. You're qualified.
I'd like to clarify the the size of the sign. Uh the sign is actually the width of the the entrance as as defined. Under prior submission uh with simply adding a uh support ledge with a vertical sign. Uh above that ledge. Uh the sign is thirty inches high and twenty feet wide. And it is an LED illuminated sign. Uh the sign is is forward of the facade by one foot nine inches to allow the sign to be seen. Uh from from the uh the the street. Um you know, when we looked at this, we realized that this sign was not large enough. Because when you look at it from Marin Avenue, uh it's essentially forty uh three feet from Marin. From Bay Street, it's seventy feet. So that in essence drove the need to increase the size of the sign. Uh so the sign is very simple. It's essentially. LED. And the building acts as the backdrop.
So you're answering my question by saying that. My my main concern was the brightness of the sign. So basically, by making it larger was to have it more visible. It's not the brightness of the light that's attracting me from Bay Street, so. I can say that's a fair assessment to say that.
Yes, the sign that the sign will not be overly bright. It will just be larger because as you saw on the prior rendering. It it's not clear where the entrance is. And as Mr. McCann uh described, we're concerned about the police department and an emergency. The fire department in case of a fire. So we want to really clarify wayfinding. Because when you look at property, you're looking at the kiosk on the corner. And you're looking at the landscape, which is elevated, covering the front of the building. So the notion of having this sign illuminated will help. Realize where the entry portal is in the evening time. So what notion we illuminated it.
Okay, I I definitely, I do agree with you. I I passed by there and I see that. I was just more concerned about the brightness, but it is very difficult where. The building entrance is and stuff like that. I would be very helpful. Um thanks for clarifying that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right, thanks, Eddie. Um anybody else? Any questions, Mr. Gary? Okay, thank you, sir. We appreciate it. And if you could uh stop that screen share.
Did we lose Mr. McCann?
He's in the audience.
Okay. One moment.
First time you guys ever kicked me out.
My term runs until twenty twenty five, counsel.
That's that's our presentation.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate it. Um alright, so it's time. Let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public and you'd like to comment, please raise your hands. And if you were calling in, I don't see anybody calling in, but uh for the record, you can press star nine to raise your hands. Anybody from public, if you'd like to comment?
Don't see, Mr. Chair, I don't see public. I moved to close the public.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Uh Matt, do you have anything you want to add?
Uh no more testimony from staff. Um I think the signage applicant uh variance is uh. Clear and testified to for the board's consideration.
Okay, thank you. So I entertain a motion.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two one dash one one eight as presented to the board tonight.
Second.
We got it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval.
On a motion to approve, uh Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Gengeden.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, commissioners. Appreciate your time.
No worries. Okay, so uh once again, we carried item twelve tonight. That was the uh review and discussion of the updates to the master plan. That has been moved to December seventh, date certain. Uh so let's call item thirteen is the review and discussion of the inclusionary zoning. Which require which requires all applicable developments to include a mandatory onsite affordable housing set aside, formal action may be taken.
Chairman, do you want to take a five minute break before we start this?
Um. Mike, what do you think? Do you need a break?
I have no idea how long it'll be. I mean, you know what? Why don't we just take five real quick?
Yeah, let's take five and uh it's six thirty six. We'll come back at uh six forty one, everybody. Thank you.
So Matt and Mike, how was your Thanksgiving? Good?
Very good. We haven't seen you in a while.
Yeah, it's been two two meetings, right? The one before Thanksgiving is tough, man, every year for me. I go home, yeah. And then that was my travel, otherwise I could have logged in from home, but that was traveling that day. That was my own, my first vacation in a couple of years, so.
Did you go to Rome?
I did, yeah.
I knew it. I knew it. It's your favorite place. I've still never been to Rome.
Dude.
I know.
What are you waiting for? Let's uh, let's do a trip, Matt.
I'm in.
Matt and hey, Commissioner Gang.
It's an amazing place.
Isn't it? I love it. I mean, I mean, as a planner, I would think that you would be like so in awe, right?
So much of Italy is just amazing.
Yeah, it's amazing. Now, you guys don't need me now because you have Commissioner Gangadin who makes all the motions now and. Yeah. You just stepped it up there, girl.
Believe me, we always need you.
Don't even try it, Doc. He does have a great job, but yes.
No, no, listen, you guys are off.
No, when you're not there, we have to scramble at the last minute. Who's going to be the VP?
Who else is going to have a meeting, you know, like, get us out of here?
Oh, Chairman's back. I wouldn't say anything.
So Dr. Gonzalez, just don't get used to it, okay?
I I still have to send Vid you that fruit basket that I promised her.
Chris, I think you should come from Dr. Gonzalez.
It should.
Yeah.
I listen, I've been trying to get a bottle of wine out of him for.
Oh, wow. All y'all have one coming Christmas.
All right, let's uh. Get on with our lives here, guys. Let's uh. Come back to order and I already called that review and discussion of inclusionary zoning. And just for the record, I believe we lost Commissioner Cruz. He apparently somewhere better today.
All right, so we still have five members. We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you, Matt.
All right, should I take it from there, Chairman?
Sure.
Okay. All right, so we are in city planning. We're really excited to be back before the planning board with the inclusionary zoning ordinance. And I'm just gonna start sharing my screen. What we have prepared is a staff memo. That will will go over. I may be reading some sections and. And I'll be here to field any questions. Just chime in as we go through it. Okay, sorry about that. All right, here we go. All right. All right, so we have a memo. This is dated today, November thirtieth, twenty twenty one. This was not put on the data portal, so we do want to mark this exhibit. This is a thirteen page memo. Written by me regarding the staff memo for the master plan consistency report regarding ordinance twenty one dash zero seven seven.
Well, Matt, let's mark it as B one.
All right, mark B one.
And we do have to mark the notice, please.
Oh, that is true. Santo, have you had a chance to review the notice?
I have reviewed the notice. All does appear to be in order, Mr. Chairman, so let's mark the notices B one. Let's mark Matt's memo as B two.
All right, thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Santo. Okay. So I'm just gonna jump right into this. So the planning board is in receipt of ordinance twenty one dash zero seven seven. This was introduced actually yesterday to city council. And we have prepared this report for your consideration. And 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 we are looking for you to affirm. The recommendation and findings that we have in this this report. Our recommendation, so I'm just gonna read this section. The the staff determined that the proposed I Z ordinance filed under ordinance twenty one dash zero seven seven is substantially consistent. With the master plan and staff recommends that the planning board vote to recommend adoption of the municipal council. In accordance with forty colon fifty five D dash sixty two A of the MLUL. After a land use element of the housing element are adopted, the governing board may adopt or amend the zoning ordinance relating. To the nature and extent of the uses of land and of buildings and structures thereon. And all of the provisions of such zoning ordinance or any amendment or revision there too shall either be substantially consistent. With the land use plan element and the housing plan element of the master plan or designed to effectuate such plan elements. I'll leave the rest of that quote. For for the memo. So just a by way of some history. At the top of page two here on the memo. In March of twenty nineteen, the planning board adopted a housing plan element detailing concerns. Over housing affordability. And adopted a master plan reexamination report recommending the city adopt an inclusionary zoning ordinance. The reexamination report did not specify the details of what would make a successful or substantially consistent I Z ordinance. But made mention that the city was considering a twenty percent onsite affordable housing obligation. It was stated that the need for the affordable housing should be assessed. In relation to the physical land and whether the pricing of the units is prohibited cohort cohorts within income categories. At or below the median income, I'm sorry, the the area median income. The reexamination report went on to state. A diversification of households with different incomes within the same areas is imperative for the city to develop holistically. With development comes improvements to utilities, schools, parks slash open spaces. And public transit, those improvements should benefit all Jersey City citizens. New and old, below poverty level, and the households earning more than two hundred thousand dollars a year, end quote. Lastly, the report. Included the recommendation that an inclusionary zoning ordinance will address concentrated wealth along with concentrated poverty. And it will require all developments to be inclusive of mixed income communities. So to summarize, the reexamination report. One, inclusion zoning ordinance should be adopted. Two, the details of that ordinance were to be assessed. Jersey City's needs are nuanced and that equity is paramount. I'm just gonna scroll back up to, I guess, the lead into this recommendation section. So. These are certainly polarizing and stressful times, both locally, domestically and globally. One of these sources of polarization has been over the topic of affordable housing. The Jersey City Division of City Planning supports the creation of zoning or inclusionary zoning. However, we know that it's not a panacea. To housing affordability or housing security. Instead, inclusionary zoning is one tool that should be balanced alongside numerous other policies and decisions to combat racial, economic and spatial inequities. So we hope that the polarized conversations about affordable housing. In Jersey City have left enough room for the municipal council to think critically and constructively about this specific tool of inclusionary zoning. With that said. I'll move on to the master planned consistency. View, so the, we did find that this proposed ordinance is substantially consistent with the master plan. And as permitted under the law, the inclusionary zoning ordinance requires that certain developments, rezonings. And redevelopment plan adoptions or amendments result in onsite affordable housing set asides. The set asides are separated into two tiers. Which I can show on a map. This map was part of the distribution materials. It's also a part of the ordinance twenty one dash zero seven seven. This is a map before you title inclusionary zoning tier map dated October twenty first, twenty twenty one. The city is separated onto two tiers. We also call out the NJ Sports and Exposition Exposition Authority area. As being not applicable. That said, the majority of the city is in tier one, which includes low, moderate and mid income. Middle income tiers or areas that are less than one hundred twenty percent AMI. And they have a ten percent onsite set aside. And tier two, which is. Mapping upper income tracks, which are greater than or equal to one hundred and twenty percent of the AMI. And those areas are, should this chapter be triggered, fifteen percent onsite set aside. So the intent and purpose of the tiering is twofold. Tearing reinforces the recommendations of the twenty nineteen reexamination report to distribute the gains of growth equitably. The ordinance also remains also requires that city planning assess demographics and needs by mandating the staff review. And that other administrative controls of the affordable units. By. Sorry, did I skip the part here? The ordinance also requires that city planning assess demographics and needs of mandate. And needs by mandating the staff review and update to the tier map every five years. The ordinance uses chapter one eight eight and U HAC, which is U H A C. To address the income distributions and other administrative controls of the affordable units. By requiring applicable developments to include affordable housing set asides pursuant to chapter one eight eight. And you hack the city's creating ample opportunity for mixed income neighborhoods and increased access to neighborhood facilities and improvements. So this next section, we've, in this memo, looks long. I'm not. The thirteen pages sounds long, but we've embedded the body of the ordinance in here. And we've added inline staff comments just to highlight certain sections. So I'm going to be scrolling through. If there are sections that I'm not touching upon in the ordinance that you have any questions on, we can scroll back to those sections. So just how how I'm, you can read this is there's gonna be an underlying section. For example, the the title, part of the title is underlined. There's a. There's a number that refers to the note. So this note one is just referencing the title of the ordinance, which includes the word applicable. To signal that this is a triggered based inclusionary zoning ordinance, not a mandate. Which is not permitted in regular zones. So the trigger based is what we've landed on. There's been some confusion, especially in newspapers about this. And it, we want to make it very clear that this is trigger based inclusionary zoning ordinance as permitted under the law. Below and whereas state, below there are whereas statements regarding the purpose and intent of this ordinance and the history regarding the priorization. Definitions, the definitions have been reviewed and updated as necessary. For example, the approving authority once was department and division heads that had the power to evaluate reductions. That's no longer the case. Now there are no buyouts or reductions. And the approving authority is now defined as the planning board or zoning board. All right, just there's a call out here for you hack, which means the uniform housing affordability controls. I was using that acronym earlier. This is a state law that guides. Affordability and the administration of those units. Yes, also, it's important to note that the U HAC is still employed in this ordinance and that chapter one eighty seven and chapter one eight eight. Are linked by usage of U HAC and by the oversight of the division of affordable housing. Now we're gonna get more into the the meat of the ordinance, so we're starting here with one eighty seven dash three applicability and exemptions. Note number four highlights this main trigger paragraph. So I'm just gonna read this in its entirety. All developments with a residential component. Including mixed use developments for which a developer requests and or obtains. Five or more residential units or five thousand or more square feet of residential floor area. Inclusive of residential hallways and egress areas. I, as a result of variances pursuant to NJ S A forty colon fifty five D dash seventy C. And D. I I as a result of rezoning or triple I as the result of the adoption. Of a new or amended redevelopment slash rehabilitation. I'm I'm gonna just say or rehabilitation plan pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law. So there's a note that goes along with this really important clause. The applicability clause. Or as I'm referring to as its trigger. Paragraph one above is being cleaned up from the prior ordinance. It's important to note that the phrase inclusive of residential hallways and egress areas was added to close loopholes. And clarify how to calculate floor area and residential areas. I'm gonna reiterate here and several times throughout this memo, there are no buyouts or reductions possible for applicable developments. Rezonings or adoption slash amendments to redevelopment plans. With that said, I do want to spend some time on I I and triple I above. It's important to. When a rezoning or amendment to a redevelopment plan is requested, obtained or simply proposed. City planning staff will assess whether there is an increase in units or floor area that triggers this chapter. Or whether there is a rebalancing of the bulk standards that does not result in an increase of five thousand units. I'm sorry, five, five thousand, five residential units or five thousand square feet of residential floor area. For example, we have two here. If a redevelopment plan amendment increases building height, but also decreases building coverage or decreases the permitted floor plate of a tower. There could be an instance where an amendment does not trigger the I Z O. Another example in the latest master plan, which we may have, who we thought we were gonna hear tonight. There are several corrective zoning recommendations. One is one example that you'll hear about when we present to you. Is changing some areas of the city from R one to the R two D zone. That is a change from an implied density of thirty five units per acre. Or one and two family homes on a twenty five by a hundred lot. To seventy five units per acre on a twenty five by a hundred lot. In other words, that's going from two units to four units on a twenty five by a hundred lot. So that is under the exemption. Per this chapter of developments, less than fifteen total residential units. However, it is still increasing those units from two to four. Okay. Moving on to paragraph or section B, the following developments shall be exempt from the requirements of this chapter. So I just mentioned this, developments less than fifteen. Total residential units are exempt. And I just wanted to call out this language because this is actually slightly changed from the prior ordinance. Before that, the exemption was fifteen units or less were exempt. We've increased it by one to fifteen. And that was mostly a result of looking at how ten and fifteen percent set asides. Pan out when you have fourteen versus fifteen units. So with fifteen units, you get to one point five units that's supposed to be designated as affordable. And then that gets rounded up to two per this chapter. Okay. Moving on to. For the page splits a little bit annoying here, but we're moving on to the affordable housing set aside under chapter. Or in section one eighty seven dash four. This is where we specify and call out the two tiers. So tier one, the paragraph starts here. We just. Reiterating some of the information I talked about earlier, how this is developments and low, moderate and middle income census tracts. We say this is a ten percent set aside. And we call out what low, moderate and middle income means in this very paragraph. And this is furthered by note six. So to address the goals and objectives specified in the master plan reexamination report, the affordable housing set aside has been parsed out into two tiers. The tiers are delineated by census tract and by using median family income, the method is further specified on the map. Tier one as specified above is a ten percent set aside. For applicable developments. And all areas less than one hundred twenty percent of area median income. Again, there are no buyouts or reductions if this chapter is triggered. In addition, the the language specifies that if an inclusionary zoning development. In tier one receives a tax abatement, that the affordable housing set aside shall be increased to a minimum of fifteen percent set aside. And worth noting is that tier one is sixty nine percent of Jersey City land area. And then nine percent of that sixty nine is is the NJ S E A. And then nine percent of that sixty nine is is the NJ S E A area. Tier two, this is the fifteen percent set aside area. This is greater than or equal to hundred twenty percent of the area mean income. And this area makes up thirty one percent of the Jersey City land area. Again, no buyouts and reductions. Paragraph three. Which is covered by node eight, I'm just gonna scroll down to the next one. So note eight just is a paragraph that references and addresses any projects that receive subsidy. As listed in that paragraph, they shall have a set aside of twenty percent onsite regardless of the tier that they're in. And then we have B here that talks about the rounding of units. So rounding is slightly altered from the last ordinance, if the set aside had a fraction of point five or higher. It was rounded up to the next whole unit. What was added here is that if the set aside has a fractional unit less than point five, the developer shall provide a payment in lieu of the fractional amount. So what that means is that there's an example here. An applicable development in tier two with forty two units would have a set aside of six point three units. So forty two times fifteen percent, six point three. In this example, six affordable units would be required onsite and a payment in lieu onsite for the amount of fifty four thousand dollars would be required. To satisfy the fractional unit. The chapter specifies that the funds deposited into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund for the creation of affordable housing in Jersey City. Alright, moving on to one eighty seven dash five, there's additional standards for affordable housing. These two additional standards are necessary to balance the cost benefit of the mandatory set aside. Moving on to the tier map section of the chapter, note eleven. We're just specifying that the tiers listed again by map. The method of creating the map is listed on the map and uses a family meeting. Family area mean income from twenty twenty one and twenty nineteen as available from HUD and the American Community Survey. As mentioned earlier, city planning is supposed to update this every five years by council action. This timeframe was recommended by Fair Share Housing Center to avoid numerous annual updates or having a static map. Note thirteen. Note, no exception to the tier map is permitted, this clause should garner assurance that there are no loopholes. Compliance. We referencing here you hack again and chapter one eighty eight. Just wanna call out that we we shorthanded certificate of occupancy. But this has been the rule of thumb already put into place with the division of affordable housing. That we need to enter into an affordable housing agreement prior to the issuance of any C O. Let's see, this is new, there's an administrative fee that was added. So it's been found that there's there's administrative costs associated with formalizing the affordable housing agreements. And this chapter now has implemented a fee of two thousand dollars to cover that administrative cost. Associated with formalizing the affordable housing agreement. We have a violations chapter, severability chapter, inconsistencies chapter, and lastly. We, the effective date and scope. So it's worth noting that this ordinance will go into effect immediately upon the second reading. Should it pass? That's it.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Let's open it up for questions from the board at this point. Anybody wanna go first or should I should I just jump in?
Jump in, Commissioner.
Okay. So Matt, I'm correct to say that the only way this gets triggered is. If there's a deviation or variance requested or a new redevelopment plan is enacted. Or redevelopment plan is changed that results in five or more units being created, correct?
Yeah, so. Right, five or more units or five thousand or more square feet of residential floor area.
Okay, so this gets to my question is. In the case. Where this is triggered, where five or more units are are granted and this. This is triggered. Is an applicant able to come back to the board later? You know, we often see an applicant come back with a reduction in units. Once this is triggered, can it be taken back in that manner?
I'm not sure I fully understand the question, so let me see if I understand it. So what you're saying is there's a twenty unit building, for example. That comes back for an amendment, reducing their unit count to fourteen. Or is that is that what you're asking?
Yeah, let's say there's there's a twenty unit building and they ask for a. You know, an additional floor and we grant five more units to that building. Now they trigger this I Z O. Later they come back and. You know, for some reason they ask for a hardship variance that now they need to reduce the number of units in that building.
From twenty five to twenty, which they would be permitted?
Yeah, let's say it goes back to the twenty that was permitted originally.
Without any variance.
With no variance, they come back and amend their plan to an as of right plan.
Yeah, to me, that seems no different from. That property changing hands or that same owner making another application. Because they have the right to. Under the zoning.
Okay.
I think in that in that example, you're you're saying if they absolve themselves of the trigger or of of. Having this chapter apply to them, that we wouldn't be able to apply it. Even if it was amendment and they remove those. That scope of the project which kicked in this chapter.
Okay. And I know I'm, you know, I'm splitting hairs here, but let's say they go down to. A twenty one unit project. Or a twenty two unit project which. You know, would. Absolve them of that affordable housing.
So if they're under five units. Or more. Or five thousand square feet or more square feet, five thousand or more square feet of residential floor area. As a result of that C or D variance. Then yes, this trip, this chapter applies. If they are, just to make this example simple, if they're at four addition, four more units. And four thousand more square feet of residential floor area. Because of that C or D variance. Yes, they would not trigger this chapter.
Okay, so and I guess. I'd have to ask, you know, you as well as Santo maybe on this. Does that, let's say that scenario happened, someone comes in, they trigger the I Z O. They come back to us with one less unit. In that variance that un-triggers the I Z O. Can we consider that? In any decision moving forward?
We do have this, well, Santo, if you wanna chime in, but we do have this paragraph and I didn't highlight it with the note. But under the applicability exemptions section of this chapter. Paragraph C, nothing in here precludes the city of Jersey City or approving authority from requiring affordable housing set aside. And a development not required to have a set aside pursuant to this chapter. Or requiring a higher affordable housing set aside in any development, so long as it's consistent with NJ S A. NJ S A fifty two colon twenty seven D dash three one one H. Or other applicable law. This provision does not grant the city or approving authority any additional authority beyond what they already possess. And is intended to reserve the right to exercise existing authority in accordance with applicable law. For example, the city reserves the right when it conveys municipally owned land or permits to. Development to occur on municipally owned land to require a higher set aside of affordable housing in exchange. So this is, this is meant to say that, you know, if there's an area. If there's a redevelopment plan amendment, for example, that would clearly trigger. This chapter and it's in tier two. That the. The proving authority, which is the planning board in that case, or the municipal council. Could opine on setting a higher set aside of, say, fifteen percent.
Okay. I'm not sure that answered my question or not, but that's that's good information also. My question would be.
Chairman, I think, I think first. This provision C is. Going to be. A little tricky in some aspects. We're going to the question and back up to. I think it was A one, Matt.
Oh, sorry. Yep.
So this this provision. From a construction standpoint. Right, a legal construction standpoint of the ordinance, this provision. Is talking about. Five or more residential units. So you have to have a a floor number, some number that's permitted. Whether that's three units or ten units. Right, so you have to have a floor in order for it to be quote unquote, five or more residential units. Or. The five thousand square feet of residential floor area. That. I don't know. That's gonna be very specific and very specific areas, right? Because you're talking about a set. Four area. In a plan somewhere and this exceeding that amount. But with the five unit, you have to have a floor, so let's say the floor is can only have five units on this property. When you get into little one. I don't know, reading this paragraph, if what we're saying is I'm getting five more units. As the result of a C variance. Or if what we're saying is you're getting five more units and. You're asking for a C variant, so if the C variance is a. A parking variance. That has nothing to do with the units, right? Does that then trigger this? And I just see that as being somewhat of a struggle and I'll let Matt jump back in and again, I'm.
Yeah, so I think that we had to include a a square. Feet of residential floor area. Because of the particularities of Jersey City where in large swaths of the city, we actually do not have a density standard.
Right.
Including N C. Journal Square twenty sixty redevelopment plan, Jackson Hill redevelopment plan, Ocean Avenue South redevelopment plan. So in those areas, we we wouldn't have applicability if we didn't include the five thousand square feet. So the five, I think, is a lot. Clearer, I think in more instances, it's easier to assess. A use or a density variance as triggering that five. So going from a zone that's zone one and two family to a multi-family building. Or a density variance. That results in addition of five units above the max permitted den- density or units per acre. I I agree with you without knowing every last permutation that we might see. As this chapter begins to live. In in city planning staff's day to day. But it there may be one out there that just doesn't come to mind at the moment.
Well, and so what I'm not sure of. Is whether or not the provision as it's drafted. Accomplishes the drafter's goal when writing the provision, right? I don't know if maybe. Maybe it has an unintended consequence. Maybe not, I just, I can't, I can't answer that, but Matt, it sounds to me like. Outside of the. Redevelopment realm. These are gonna be density variances in front of the zoning board. For the most part.
Yes, yeah, some maybe an expansion. Maybe a use variance, but typically a height variance or a density, yeah.
But it's a variance that's over at the zoning board as opposed to for this body.
Right, yeah, the only thing at this body would be obviously the C and. More often than not, I would say that's probably gonna lean towards. The five thousand square feet.
So I'm just not appreciating. What variance that is under the C category.
What do you mean?
The five thousand square feet, what you're getting a C variance connected to it?
Correct.
What's the example?
In some zones, we have. Say where we're permitting a tower, we have a maximum dimension on the diagonal of that tower.
Okay.
If they're asking for relief from that dimension, which grows the floor plate of that building. That is a C variance that could very easily. Actually exponentially get over five thousand square feet pretty quickly.
Alright, because, yeah.
Yeah, and there's there's step backs, there are tower step backs. There's setback variances. So it it will be triggered by Cs where we we review review them under the C variance criteria, which is. Which is might be a defect of the M L H L in some respects that doesn't necessarily. Address the urban context where we're introducing these step backs and tiering of buildings. Especially towers.
So that makes a ton of sense to me. I just. I'm just struggling with the construction of the provision, that's it.
You know, I I think I I understand. Some of the the concern, I'm not sure. I'm not sure if I I share it, I think I understand it though. This it's it's whether or not a C variance will trigger the five or more residential units. And if that would happen, I guess faster or more frequently than. A than getting up to this five thousand or more square feet. A, uh, than getting up to this five thousand or more square feet.
Push you into the density variance anyway.
Right, right.
Even if you have one more unit.
Yeah.
Outside of the one and twos.
Yeah, yeah, I, I'm not sure if parsing it out any further than this would accomplish anything. I think that.
I'm not necessarily advocating for that. I'm just not, I'm just not sure. That what you're thinking and appreciating in your mind. Is translating into the written word in front of us. Is all, um.
Maybe I just don't understand what you're saying, but I think it's very clear.
I think it's very clear to you because I think you're thinking of those concrete things. In your own mind. Where when you said it to me, then all of a sudden it becomes clear, right? But my, so, so my struggle is.
If there's more C variance examples, I would probably come up with some more, but. There's many, many instances where a C could get, could trigger this.
But does it have to be, right? Does it have to be a variance?
What do you mean? Does it have to be a variance? No. What do you mean? What does, what has to be a variance to trigger?
Variants.
Correct, as a result of a variance. Or as a result of a rezoning.
Right.
Yes, so that's, I guess what we could say is that those are qualifiers for the trigger. Is that, is that better? Maybe.
In all honesty, my struggle is. I'm okay with all developments with a residential component, including mixed use development for which a developer. Requests and or obtains, right? That. Those four words. Because then you jump to as a result of.
Right, so I mean, you could, I guess you could have changed it where five. I don't know, you could have moved that some of that qualifying language down to an exemption. But this is the format that we had it in previous ordinance. And in keeping with it, we, we left it. This way. And maybe, maybe I've been living with it too long, but it, it seems clear to me that's qualifying language and then the.
The chairman's question or the follow up to chairman's question, right?
Okay.
Developer requests, we'll do the easy one, in my opinion. Developer requests five more units.
Sure.
Amends the application to three units. Over the requirement or the permit.
And are they, did they also through that var- C variance, I'm assuming you're following?
Well, in this scenario, right, it's a density variance in front of the zone.
A density variance and they're in every other.
For five more than permitted.
And in every other respect. They're meeting the bulk requirements.
Well, in that scenario, it's rare that you meet the bulk requirements when you have a density variance. It's possible, but.
But I think for the sake of make that, that, so. I don't like hypotheticals, but if we want to talk about hypotheticals, we have to make it clear that. It's not also triggering the five thousand or more square feet.
It's not triggering the five thousand or more square feet.
Okay.
All right.
So you're going from five down to three, is that?
Now we're down to three.
Yes. And they want to come back for an amendment to that application?
Yes, they amend the application that night and remove two units.
I don't believe that we'll receive an application that wants to. Trigger the variance or trigger this chapter and then comes back to amendment. I just don't think that will happen, but for the sake of this hypothetical. I don't believe they wouldn't be in, it wouldn't be in their right to ask for the removal of that condition of approval.
But it hasn't been granted yet. It's happening, right?
Okay.
My scenario. I've brought an application. I exceed this five unit. Density. Standard. I'm asking for five more units than I'm permitted.
Okay.
And that's a D variance in front of the zoning board and we all agree that's the only trigger for the ICO.
Okay.
That night. I'm hearing the comments and I decide, well, I'm removing one of the units. So now I'm down to four more than I'm permitted. We're going to carry the application. I'll be back next month with a revised plan. That's four more than what's permitted. Does this still get triggered? Do they have to provide the affordable?
I don't believe so, no.
So then why is the word request after the word developer in that second sentence? Cause I would take the position, well, wait a minute, you requested it. You may have amended it, but you requested it. So that's, and again, it's easy to sit here and, and play, you know, uh. The Monday morning quarterback.
Yeah.
And I'm not trying to give you a hard time at all, although it may sound like I am, I'm not. I just. I don't want something that. Isn't what's intended is my only point. So.
I think if we hang our hat on that request word. I just, I don't, I just don't know. And, and someone goes from five to four and obviously no longer. Triggers this chapter. I mean, I think the approving authority will make the decision they see fit, but we might have a problem on our hands. So.
Unfortunately, it's a zoning board matter and Vinnie's gonna have to deal with it, not me, but. That's again, I don't want to beat you up on it, I.
So I mean, uh, just by way of some background, like I don't, we don't, we didn't even have. Under the prior ordinance, the IZO, we didn't have a, a, an application go through the zoning board. So people aren't, weren't requesting to trigger the IZO.
Well, that's also true, right? There's no, look. If, if the triggers five, the applications are gonna be for, for four, not, nobody goes to the five, right? You're gonna go to ten or twenty. You don't go five thousand and one feet.
Yeah.
I mean, that's. Yes, that's. At least my private clients don't because I tell them not to, right? I go, let's go for more. So. It could have, and again, we're, we're into the weeds on it. And the only reason I use examples is because that's.
I think the request, but the request word, I think is more important when you apply it to the result of a rezoning or. Or an amendment request. So it might just, it's just doing different service, I think, to this overall paragraph. And I think the, the real intent for a C or D variance application is if. Uh, if it's requesting it and it's requesting it and the board is a, it, the board is granting the, uh, them obtaining. Something that triggers this chapter. That would be, I think, how it's probably gonna get administered.
So and again. You can tell me no. Maybe the word request goes after little I. Little I two, little I three. And. It's just reworded it, right? As the result. Of a request for the variance as a result of the request for rezoning, as a result of the request for. Adoption.
How does the first part of the sentence work?
I think you leave it as obtaining. I think you split request and obtain perhaps. And again, I don't expect you to look at it and do it now, right? I'm just.
I don't know if that sentence structure makes sense. Because the obtains, the request and or obtains applies the qualifying. Five and the five thousand. So I think. I think that's, I don't know. Quests of variance, I don't know, but, uh, yeah, I, I perhaps, um. And maybe this isn't the best format to get into the semantics of, uh, of it, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, I, I, I. Understand where Santos going and I, I think it's, you know, something that could be looked at. Before final adoption, if it does go through to that point.
Which is my only point, right? My personal comment is if. It's going to be recommended, my recommendation is that we look at the. Construction of the language to make sure it achieves the goal.
Yeah. Okay, so it's looking at where to put requests and if it's whether or not it's in the right location. Or we can put it after a double I or the triple I or. I'm not sure that. The single I, I guess, because that's where you raised the most problems. Okay.
So if I, I hate to zill it to you, Matt, but if, if I can jump back into a scenario again. Same scenario, so I'll, I'll pick it up where. You know, whether it's this board or it's a different board grants. A, a deviation that triggers the IZO, whatever that deviation may be. Not important to me right now. And the applicant at a later date comes back for an amendment to their application. They remove that trigger. Let's say. Whatever the approving authority turns them down. So now they're still bound to. The trigger in the IZO. What is that board's legal exposure? It is, is basically what I've been trying to get at. I, I would consider the trigger of the IZO and, and correct me if I'm wrong. I would consider that a public benefit. So if I base my vote. On them taking that public benefit away. In a, in a, a plan amendment or an application amendment. Or is, is a board liable or open to a lawsuit at that point from that applicant? I don't know if anybody followed that.
Oh, but they're free to file and build whatever they, they get approved and they can have multiple approvals, so. You know, if you're gonna start denying applications because there's no affordable housing component. That's gonna be a problem.
But I, I'm not saying, you know, from, and the, the kids use this phrase from jump. That I would.
I'm not familiar with that.
You have, you know it. That, you know, we couldn't require. That an applicant trigger the IZO as part of their initial site plan application. But what I'm saying is if they come back at a later date with a reduction that. You know, takes that trigger away. And the approving authority denies them. Based on the IZO being a public good. Is, does that put them in legal jeopardy now? Maybe I'm overthinking this, tell me if I am.
We don't know the answer to that. We're gonna find out, I suspect, right? That's the kind of stuff that lawsuits are made of, Chairman.
Sure. Okay, um, the far simpler question I have and, and Matt, we've talked about this. Every time I have an affordable housing component that comes up in a site plan application. I condition that that applicant. Build those units with the same love and care and materials that they build every other unit in that. In that development. So is that the case in this, in this language?
So I, I spoke with, uh, GG, the division, uh, director of the division of affordable housing about. About this. And this is something that they're gonna be putting into their affordable housing agreements. So they believe it's in their power to, to request that change and what they have already made it a practice to do that. Uh, and, and haven't run into any problems requiring that.
Okay, so, you know, does it add a, an extra layer of security to them? That we continue to ask for that condition in any. Any application that has this IZO triggered?
I guess it would, yes. And, but I don't, I don't think that they're worried at this point about requiring that in their affordable housing agreements.
Okay. These are things I worry about personally. So yeah, I, I would. You know, if you guys indulge me, I'll, I'll continue to ask for that whenever we have a, an affordable housing component. Those are all my questions. Anybody else?
I just have one question.
Sure, go ahead, Jeffrey.
Sure.
Uh, Matt, uh, one eighty-seven dash four, affordable housing set aside. Tier one. The question is for. Does it help or hurt? To raise or, or can it even be done to raise? The threshold from ten percent?
Excuse me?
Okay, so my question is, can, can the ten percent be changed? And if it was changed. The ten of, the ten percent set aside, if it was changed, would it help or hurt? Uh, the affordable housing.
That's a very difficult question to answer. So. The, one of the problems with a. Inclusionary zoning ordinance, which is predicated on a developer asking for more. Is that if you set the set asides too high. It will result in zero affordable units, affordable units getting built. If you set it too low. Then from a public opinion side. It will be, uh, considered that the developers are running away with the store. We believe that the tiers and the method by which we have devised the tiers. Is, is appropriate. Uh, and the set asides that go along with that tiering. I hope, I hope that got it, the question.
Oh, no, no, that, that's, that was a good answer, because I, I, I just didn't know. That's all. That was, that was a perfect answer.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Okay, anybody else? Any question?
Um, I have a question from Matt, but, um, the same thing as, um. With the previous commissioner that spoke on. It's basically, I see it in here in the tiers of, um, affordable housing. And what triggers from affordable housing and the different stages of affordable housing? That we could see more low income housing. Being developed, you know, because of, you know, the, the, I, it seems like the need. And the wards that, uh. With less income, uh, wards, uh, the, the need is not for affordable. It's basically, the need is more low income.
So U HAC, um, which we're pointing to those, uh, uniform housing affordability controls. It specifies that, uh, certain, um, mix of those affordable units need to be low and moderate, and then it carves out actually a portion of those units to be very low income. So by leaning on that state law, we are creating opportunities to house very low income individuals, uh, and families.
All right, now, another thing then, is there a, um, I know certain people that moved into affordable housing and projects that were just built recently. Is there a timeframe for these type of things? Like, eh, after a year, after five years, the developer doesn't have to buy with this anymore? Or if property exchange ownership, as it's, uh, eliminate the affordability of housing there and then.
So the affordable housing agreement, um, the effect of that, uh, I believe will result in a deed restriction on the property, which should follow title. And U HAC specifies, uh, thirty years for, um, for any of the deed restrictions and the release of that, uh, deed restriction, I believe, is specified in that same law that, uh, is done by council action.
I concur with that, Matt.
Okay, anybody else? Anybody else? All right, thanks, Matt. Do you have, uh, you have anything else or can I open it up to public at this point?
No, I open up to public.
Okay, uh, so at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here that wants to comment, please raise your hands. And once again, I don't see anybody that's calling in, but if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands.
Promoting Elam O'Kansey.
How's it going, sir?
Hey, hello, am I on?
You are on. I just want to swear you in before you speak though, okay? If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight's going to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yep.
For the record, could you state and spell your name for me, please?
Sure, my name's Elam O'Kancy. That's E L O R M O C A N S E Y.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Kancy, uh, good evening. We have five minutes for you.
Cool, cool, cool. Thank you. So like I said, my name's Elam O'Kancy. I am organizer with Fair Share Housing Center and I'm here to just share a brief statement about the inclusionary zoning ordinance. As you all know, uh, strong inclusionary zoning ordinance is critical to maintaining affordability and preventing displacement. In addition, it's a key component of a comprehensive strategy for ratio and socioeconomic integration. And, uh, Fair Share Housing Center is very hopeful that this inclusion or inclusionary zoning ordinance, once enacted and enforced, will be a significant, significant step towards ensuring that new developments are inclusive and equitable and will foster a vibrant, diverse community in Jersey City for years to come. However, in closing, I'll personally add that, uh, as a friend of the Jersey City community, I would like to commend uh, Mayor Philip for collaborating with Fair Share Housing Center to create a better I Z O. However, also, I must echo the voices of the many community members, leaders and organizations who've campaigned vigorously for a strong I Z O and share that we're all looking forward to council leadership increasing the set asides come December fifteenth or whenever this I Z O is back in front of city council. So thank you all for the opportunity to speak and I will yield the rest of my time.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate it. All right, anybody else from the public, if you'd like to comment, once again, please raise your hands. And if you are calling in, press star nine to raise your hands. Anybody else from public?
Mr. Chair, I don't see anyone. I move to close the public.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Matt, obviously, we have your recommendation, correct?
Yes, uh, if you want me to reiterate it. We determined that this is substantially consistent with the master plan and staff recommends the planning board vote to recommend adoption by municipal council.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to, uh, now make a motion, uh, to, um, accept and approve as presented today to the board the review and discussion of inclusionary zoning, which requires all applicable developments to include a mandatory onsite affordable housing set aside and, uh, forward this to, uh, city council for formal adoption.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval and forwarding to city council.
Sorry, Vice Chairman Dr. Gonzalez.
Um, Matt, you did a great job. I know you've probably spent a lot of time on this, your shows. And, um, you know, it's times like this where you, you kind of are proud of, uh, of serving in a, in a board where your, your staff is trying to really make a difference in, um, in the city that we live. Um, so I think you did a really good job. I appreciate your work. So I would, I.
Commissioner Torres.
You know, Matt, um, looking through these documents and reading up all this stuff, um, you, you really appreciate the fact of what that you, uh, F, you do. At this conversation of quite a few people in Jersey City. Like, uh, vice chair said, you know, very proud. But I know that the, um, mayor himself has us, uh, have you and your staff and, uh, the council. It makes it easier for me to cast a vote because I know that really you guys really reached out a lot of work behind this. Put together. I, um, I commend you for that. Uh, I commend city council for having that ward open and the community groups and, um, you know, it makes it so much easier just to say, hey, I vote I on this one because you guys really are looking out for the community and we need to let everybody in Jersey City know that everybody in Jersey City is a part of Jersey. Low income to the chicken. Everybody is a city, city that it is. Definitely voted.
Commissioner Cruz.
He's not here.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right. Uh, Commissioner Gangadin.
Matt, I just want to say thank you so much. I really appreciate all the work that you've put into this and thank you to the, uh, planning department for this I Z O. We live in Jersey City and we know the importance, um, as equity is very important. You guys did an awesome job in incorporating all of the uh, work, the legal terms to protect and to preserve Jersey City here. So thank you again. Um, I voted I.
Commissioner Allen.
Uh, Matt, just like everybody else said, thank you. Thank you for your hard work, your office. You know, taking a look at the documents, it seemed pretty thorough. I think you did your homework on this one. I'm like the chairman. I have my doubts. I really, I'm, I'm just going to be honest. I have my doubts. I just hope someone who's really, really smart doesn't find a way to exploit anything that's in here. Again, good work. I'm vote I.
And Chairman Langston.
Yeah, I want to echo everybody else here. Um, Matt, you guys did a great job on this, you planning staff. Uh, I appreciate that you reached out to Fair Share Housing on this. Um, I think it's a great collaboration. It's, I think it's a solid plan and you know, I agree with Jeffrey. I hope there's somebody out there that doesn't find that loophole that that some, you know, that we've missed, that city council has missed, that the planning staff has missed. I, I hope it's not there. And, uh, you know, I look forward to seeing, uh, more affordable housing on the street. And, uh, I'm going to vote I.
Motion carries, uh, five, four, zero against, and, um, just for the record, Commissioner Cruz is absent.
Okay, thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, I believe, uh, let me bring up my agenda again. Let's move on to memorialization of resolutions, everybody.
Mr. Chair, I only have two resolutions. I want to confirm that that is correct, Matt.
Correct.
Uh, so Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the following resolutions. The first resolution, resolution of the planning board of the City of Jersey City authorizing and approving the appointment of legal counsel. And the second resolution is agreement of legal services.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, could I have a roll call, please, for memorialization, Matt?
Absolutely. Vice Chairman Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz. Oh, my gosh. Commissioner Gangadin. Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Uh, and I just want to say thank you for the kind words, commissioners. I'll, I'll take those back to Tanya and everyone else.
Chairman, just before you adjourn, uh, Matt, in all sincerity, I'm not trying to give you a hard time. So everybody understands, I talk to Matt. Matt does do a tremendous job. I have the utmost respect for you, Matt, and, uh, I just, I just want, you know, I want everything to be the best it can be, so.
Likewise, I think it's a good point. We'll, we'll see if it need warrants of a revisit.
And, uh, Chairman, I want to make sure for, for Michael and, and his group over there, we got to do a resolution for them. I don't know why it hasn't been on yet. I want to make sure he's getting paid, so. Get it done. Follow up on that and make sure we get it on, uh, for the December seventh. If it don't happen, I'll, I'll get it back over to you guys.
Yep.
And I thank everybody again for, for another year. It's going to be a great year. We're going to see each other, feel it.
Oh, Mr. Chair, with that, uh, did we just memorialize Santo to be here for another year?
We did.
Can we go back on that? Nah.
I'm good. Good, you want to put that to a vote?
You know, I'm kidding, I'm kidding with you, buddy. Love you.
Yeah, I mean, we can go back on it. Chris Cuomo can get suspended indefinitely, we can.
That's right, that's right.
But that's breaking news, by the way, everybody. Chris Cuomo indefinitely suspended. Um, all right.
Thanks for putting me in the conversation with those guys.
No worries, no worries. Do we need an executive?
Happy about that a year ago.
Do we need anything else? Executive session or are we good?
All right, good.
We're good.
Uh, Chairman, before we adjourn, the December seventh meeting, we have a court ordered remake.
Yes.
So I want to make sure that we have a quorum for that meeting. It is very important that we do. The only reason I mention is because I know we're down to, to five right now, so, you know, as we come into the, the holiday season, I, I want to make sure that, uh, we have a quorum, so everybody, please. It is a priority.
No, I have a, a question relating to that. If we have a new, if we have a, yes, if we have a new commissioner who joins, are they able to vote on that? Is there something that we need to update them on or are they not qualified to vote because they weren't here for the original hearing?
They're going to have to read everything and get up to speed in order to, to vote. They'll have to certify all of that, obviously. So I welcome the new commissioner. Uh, I hope that they have the opportunity to, to read all of the material and get up to speed on it. It's a lot of material. You know, I let's make sure we have a quorum without that individual and we can deal with if they're prepared to take action and, and be able to take action, but.
I just asked a question. Is there any way of changing that date though, because of the, what else is going on on that day?
Is it a what?
Any chance of changing the date for that to, to the board for what's happening on that day? That we might lose certain commissioners?
I mean, we can't, we, we, we cannot change that day.
Can't change the day, okay.
We don't have a quorum. You know, it's going to get pumped at, obviously, and, uh, you know, I'll, I'll deal with the court. And, and that's it. Uh, that's all I can really say about it.
Yeah. No, I mean, I'll go on record now. I'll be there definitely.
I'm just, uh, in keeping with that housekeeping with the new, uh, commissioner, we'll make sure to just double check all of the, um, attendance for the first go around. And we may be sending out the transcripts. Okay. Or for other, for other folks as well.
Yeah. So Chairman, I, you know, I have a conference on that day, but, um, and you know that I'll do anything to, to be here. Do, do we have to do video? If I had to, if I'm traveling, can I do audio? Can I chime in on that in that way? Santo? Or does it have to be video? I'm just asking in case.
I prefer it to be video.
Okay.
You know, I would suggest you bring your, your phone and use the zoom function on your phone.
Right, uh, that's the day that I'm traveling. That's why, but you know, we'll, I'll figure it out. We'll, we'll figure, uh, hopefully we have a quorum. I'm sure we will.
I would hope. I would hope so.
Be there.
You will be there, Commissioner Gang?
Yes.
I'll be there also.
Oh, there you go, three.
I'm, I'm there.
Four.
All right, let's just.
The vice chair.
Yeah, I, I have it. I, I got it in the back of my head now. We'll make sure that, um, the attendance kind of lines up with the quorum that we're putting together and we'll make sure that if there's any certifications needed, we'll, we'll make people do some homework.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, guys. We appreciate it. I appreciate it. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment then.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn today's meeting.
All right, I have a motion and a second. We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Uh, I'll see you next week.
See you next week.